Twenty twenty five meeting of the Wallingford Swathmore Board, order and opening as you're willing and able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Mike Mancanca, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Here's the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating justice, all right. Ms. Mosley, would you please take attendance roll call?
Mrs. Dole. Mr. Henry.
Here.
Dr. Grande.
Here.
Mrs. Holbert.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Wattman.
Here.
Ms. Woodset.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Wilkowski Smith.
Here.
Eight voting members present.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Uh, now moving on to student representatives, student representative's report and Ms. Corbett, please take it away. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's the first meeting of twenty twenty five. Uh, the high school welcomed the new year with a lot of snow, but also a lot of testing, including the algebra and biology keystones along with finals. The conclusion of finals also marks the start of the new semester with back to school night happening right now across the bridge. Jumping into things last Monday was Martin Luther King Junior Day. WSST celebrated the legacy of MLK by uplifting and supporting others through service initiatives around the district. At NPE kindergarten students decorated care bags for meals on wheels. First through third graders wrote and decorated heart notes, then assembled care bags and fourth and fifth graders created tie fleece blankets. At SRS, students contributed to a variety of service projects, one of which was creating circle of giving care kits. West students celebrated MLK Day with a heartfelt assembly with music and poetry, and we applaud them for their incredibly kind achievement of raising over two thousand dollars to support flood like flood victims in North Carolina. Then Strathhaven Middle School began celebrating their Martin Luther King Junior Day with an assembly featuring hip hop fundamentals presented by young audiences. Their performance taught students about the civil American, the American Civil Rights Movement and highlighted themes of unity, diversity, and nonviolent action through dance, audience participation, and activities. And finally, Strathhaven student, Strathhaven High School students volunteered at the Access Community Center and City Team in Chester. There, students donated winter gear, supported Access's initiative to provide a safe space for sixteen hundred guests a month and worked with city team to help those experiencing homelessness. Congratulations to our HQ team that made history, setting a school record with sixty-two points scored in a single match and winning the match against both Chichester and Academy Park. Stay tuned for the final match located at Haverford High School against Haverford in Garnet Valley. This month was also the ninth annual regional high school art exhibition that featured the artwork by art students from high schools in the Delaware and Chester counties. These twelve talented artists um that have been recognized have represent our curricular content areas of graphic design, digital photography, ceramics, and painting. Right now, the art is available for viewing at the Delaware County Community College at the Marple Campus in room two three oh five from now until February fourteenth. On January eleventh, students hosted a purple out at the JV University Boys Basketball Games versus Ridley to raise funds and awareness for Hope for Hallie. Also, on January eleventh, Strathhaven celebrated Senior Night for the Strathhaven Girls and Boys Swim and Dive Team, followed by another Senior Night on January fourteenth for the Unified Bachi Team. Thank you to everyone who came out to support these amazing athletes who continue to demonstrate teamwork, inclusion, and Panther pride. Also, a quick shout out to our cheerleading team as they are the num uh as they are the District One Champions for the second year in a row. Let's cheer them on as they head on to states at the Santander Arena in Reading from January thirtieth to the thirty first. Initially, please consider contributing to the giant feeding schools, feeding school kids initiative. From February first through March thirty first, you can round up at the register while shopping at the giant grocery store, support our school district's efforts, working to eliminate childhood hunger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Excellent report and congratulations to all those groups uh that were so successful since we last uh met. So thank you very much. Uh, now moving on to the superintendent report and Dr. Scanlon.
Sure, yeah, thank you. And Lyndon, thanks so much for for that summary of Martin Luther King Day of Service. There was a lot happening here. I had an opportunity to attend uh many of the events that you were you were talking about at West. The uh the assembly over there uh attributed to Dr. King's legacy was was phenomenal. Also started my day over at the middle school with uh with with the hip hop fundamentals assembly. And uh that group uh really engaged the kids, told uh told a great story um about American civil rights. And uh and the end of the day really they finished with some some donations to a children's hospital as well. NPE had lots of things going on, as you mentioned over there with their service for a cause. And the uh the circle of giving and SRS had an opportunity to see some students at the end of the day working in uh multiple levels. Uh putting putting bags together for uh for the homeless shelter uh and also for the Providence Animal Shelter. They were even taking care of uh some, you know, some of the animals uh for their service projects as well. And the high school, of course, is doing all kinds of service projects throughout the year. Uh and particularly on the sixteenth uh with all of the display that was taking place of all the different service projects that was that was kind of going through the the monitors while you guys were finishing up your final exams. Uh, we were all enjoying uh all the different service projects that had taken place at the high school. And then, of course, on on Monday uh with high school students participating in in the project actually on Martin Luther King Day. So uh service is 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 a is part of the fabric here, and you'd be very proud of what the work students have been doing. Uh, not just during Martin Luther King Day weekend, but throughout the year as well. Uh, we also tonight have a presentation by uh our students from our middle school. Uh, at this point, I want to turn it over to our middle school principal, Dr. Chris Mancanca. He's joined by uh students Gideon Rain, uh Amy Lee, and Clementine DeMauro. Uh, they are gonna tell us a little bit about Panther pride.
All right, good evening, and thank you to the school board and Dr. Scanlon and Dr. Batic uh for having the middle school here tonight. Uh, we've had a great first half of the school year. I can't believe it's the last week in January already. Um, I'm here with an awesome group of uh of uh faculty and uh students. Uh, my assistant principal, Mrs. Stock, is here tonight, uh along with Mr. Massey, who's the advisor for the Screen Printing Club, uh which we're gonna highlight as as part of the presentation tonight. Um, Gideon Rain, I may Lee, Clementine DeMauro, and Joseph Corner also uh jo is joining us, but he won't, he won't get up here with me. Uh, we'll see if I can get him up here before the end of the night. Um, so we just want to start off talking about um uh last uh last summer, uh Mrs. Stock and I, uh when planning for this upcoming school year, we knew we were gonna have some challenges ahead. A lot of transitions in our building, um a lot of staff who were who were retiring. Uh, we always try to come up with a theme that guides us each year. So this year, our theme was uh Together We Can. So you'll see that represented throughout uh the presentation here tonight. Um, our goals for this year, we really spent a lot of time during the summer um to to think about what we want to achieve and what we want to accomplish. And each each year, when I became principal here, I made a commitment, 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 excuse me, to my staff uh that um we're not gonna do new initiatives every year, right? Like, our goal should be that we're always trying to create a welcoming environment for for our students. Our goal should be that we're trying to engage them. Um, uh, that we should be using using data. So uh we're continuing that journey, and we're also in uh uh continuing with all the implementation of of PBIS, which, again, you're gonna see a lot of that reflected. Uh, the pride that we have in our building and this Panther Pride initiative that we really um use to to guide us day in and day out. Uh, and I think our students really, really buy into that. So um, I just want to start with something, something funny. Okay, so uh I just want to highlight the kind of people that we have in our building. Um, as I said, with this summer, uh Mrs. Stock and I, we're we're trying to figure out with all this new staff. Um, how do we, how do we bring all these new members together and really try to build that team among our staff? And she had a great idea of creating a team building activity where we put uh our our teachers in groups and they were given a piece of artwork and they were given an hour to use whatever around the building to replicate uh that that picture. So Mrs. Stock, myself, and Mr. Bukler uh provided an exemplar. Um, you can see the the uh portrait there on the left, uh and this was the exemplar on on the right that we gave our staff. So uh, we're real lucky, lucky to have some awesome people in our building that we didn't know how this was gonna go. Uh, but our our teachers really uh rose to the occasion. So I'm just gonna go through a couple of highlights of some of the, some of the pictures. Um, uh, so they did a really good job with that. You could see Ms. Bowers there, uh representation above the basket there of uh some some pretty funny stuff. So they had a really good time with this. And again, this was this journey of trying to create this uh message of togetherness with our with our staff. This was a real funny one. Now, this was the winning team right here. So they were, they were very creative. So this is the the portrait they were given, and this is what they came up with. Uh, so that is on our stage. So that was our our winning team. But um, we got our school year off to to a really good start and um, again, uh, we're just very fortunate to have uh the kids in our building that we have uh and the teachers and staff in our building that we have. Um, so I just, we just wanted to share that. We thought was, thought was cute. Um, so may I ask Ms. Stock to come up uh and talk a little about what we're doing uh to try to increase engagement in this building?
Um, thank you so much. Uh, so this is actually inspired by a conversation that I had with a teacher here who has a lot of history at this school. And one of the things that she and I were talking about is um what was getting in the way for some of the staff and some of the teachers who made out have felt as connected um with other teachers and staff uh in the building. And one of the things that she had mentioned is that, you know, years ago, that teachers actually were able to observe each other. And uh I thought this was a great idea uh because, of course, uh we learn best from each other. And um also, I thought, well, this will also be kind of a sneaky way for our teachers and staff to kind of get to know each other um a little bit better. So what we did is just building upon uh the principle of of student engagement and uh really looking at four um principles of student engagement. How do students in a classroom engage socially, emotionally? Um, how do they engage behaviorally and how do they engage cognitively? So we came up with some guidelines that we wanted teachers uh to be looking for, and um those who volunteered uh to do it. We had a great, we've had a great response. So so far, we've had over twenty teachers uh engage in this process. And uh we were able to provide coverage uh for them. Thank you to our building subs for the most part uh for doing that. Um, and so teachers were able to uh observe each other one period, and then they would be observed uh by their peer. We asked that uh they be with somebody that they don't know very well, so not someone that they work with very much. Um, and so they did a really good job with that. Um, and then they were able to provide feedback on those four different um areas of of engagement that they saw in the classroom. And one of the things uh that uh was was kind of interesting was that I asked teachers uh to rate their experience from zero, from not at all uh, not at all a useful experience to three, extremely useful, and one hundred percent of them actually rated this experience a three. Uh, so I mean, just some of the things that they said, just anecdotally, uh, just seeing that other students that they know, like on their caseload or in their classroom, and it was really good for them to see them in a different environment with a different teacher. Um, also, they were able to see what it was like maybe for a teacher to step back a little bit and what structures they put in place in order to allow students to drive more of the lesson. Um, and also, it was good for the teacher to get some feedback from their peer. It feels good to feel validated. And they said, this is really neat. I really wish that we could do a little bit more of this. Another really fun uh project that we have in this class is from Fra Shippick. And uh Fra Shippick was able to partner with administration, with curriculum and instruction uh to a pilot flexible seating. So you can see some examples of the flexible seating. And and actually, each of these um different items, whether it be the wobble chair or whether it be the standing desk, uh each of these has some kind of component which either wobbles, moves, or there's some kind of fidget uh component. And um in actuality, um, you know, we know that there's a strong component and connection between uh student movement, uh student choice, feeling empowered, feeling comfortable, and learning, which is definitely the key. So one, you can see some different pictures of how uh Fra Shippick students have been using the flexible seating. And one of the things that she has been able to do is to get some feedback from each of her classes and each of her students. And so I really wanted to zero in on what is that eighth period, seventh grade, mostly boys class? What did they have to say about the flexible seating? And um and just looking at that class alone, nearly eighty percent of the students by choice have uh chosen to use a different level of the flexible seating. Remember, there's four to five different uh choices. There's also floor seating too as well. And then they measured their uh level of engagement, uh their level of focus. Um, and students overwhelmingly felt more comfortable. They said they felt more focused. They said they felt more awake. Um, and they felt more comfortable, both physically and mentally. So uh we're excited to see how the year is going to progress and uh how this affects our our students. But if you ever want to come in, the students are really excited to show you exactly how they put their desks together and take them apart, and they will do a demonstration for you. So.
Yeah, that that classroom is really cool, and uh I think the term is nesting. The desks can nest together. So um so again, as I uh, as I mentioned, um uh, we, we had a lot of retirements last year, uh a lot of veteran teachers who uh created certain traditions in our, in our building. Uh, and in the spirit of that, we just wanted to uh again acknowledge the eighth grade service project uh for this school year. Uh, Mr. Schaefer and uh Dr. Lynch, uh they were uh played a crucial role in 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 uh us being service oriented here uh for a very long time. And uh, this year, our students chose to support the Veterans Multi-Service Center. So we've been doing activities uh to support uh our vets. Um, Mrs. Rone, uh Ms. Rone is a, is a former vet and and uh she had an opportunity to speak to the eighth grade class. I'm sorry, is a vet, um and had an opportunity to speak to the eighth grade class. Um, and uh they, they went last week during MLK Day of Service, a group of students to go visit uh the center, and we brought uh Ms. Rone with us. Um, so she, I think she really enjoyed that, really appreciated seeing our our vets being uh taken care of. Um, so a lot of our activities throughout this year will be uh in support of uh the Veterans Multi-Service Center. Um, again, there, there are just so many things we could stand up here. Mrs. Stock and I could stand up here tonight and acknowledge some of the things happening with our sports teams and our activities and other good things happening in the, in the classroom. Um, but we just wanted to give you a sense of what's going on in the building uh when it comes to the the pride for our school and what kids really enjoy. So uh, Mrs. Stock worked with um a group of students uh to develop this video. Again, these are students um uh doing a lot of this work, so uh I just want to emphasize that. Um, uh, we did not tell them to say any of this. This is completely unsolicited. So uh, we have a really short video to to show a little bit about what's going on in our school and how our students are feeling.
Hi, this is Mira Stor. I'm Maggie Flavich.
Uh, this is Sanam Magul, reporting from Strathhaven Middle School, and I'm asking kids, what makes you proud to be a Panther? Oh, what makes you proud to be a Panther?
Um, I really love the community and the sports. It's, it's really good this year.
I'm proud to be a Panther because we have amazing teachers such as Mr. Pio and Ms. Rush, and we have a good band.
I'm proud to be a Panther because we have really good music programs and really, really good teachers.
I'm proud to be a Panther because of the great community that's here.
I'm proud to be a Panther because it does a really great um music program.
Great pride being a student.
To be proud to be a Panther is that everyone is really kind, and I really respect that because I think everyone should be kind to one another.
I just like going to the school and uh I like being able to get a good education here.
I'm proud to be a Panther because Strathhaven has a lot of really cool um different types of bands.
Respect, kindness, and joy.
To be kind.
What makes me proud to be a Panther is our school community, and it makes me feel so welcomed and included. Go Panthers!
I'm proud to be a Panther because Strathhaven has a lot of really cool um different types of bands.
I am proud to be a Panther because I have so many good friends here and we're all like kind to each other.
All the nice people in the school and the good teachers that.
I'm a Panther because I love my school and I love all of my teachers in it. Um, I feel like our school is really special because of all the activities we get to do. And I just love walking down the hallways and just being proud and showing like my Panther pride.
I'm proud to be a Panther because of the great community that's here.
Dr. Mancanca, what makes you proud to be a Panther?
Well, I just love working with all of you.
Yeah, you know, that's what makes me so proud is uh seeing all the wonderful things that our students do day in and day out, uh as well as our, as well as our staff.
I'm so happy. Go Panthers!
Stock and I take, we take a lot of pride in trying to develop that sense of community, that sense of belonging, and that that pride for this community. I've been here since two thousand and eleven, and that's something that I've uh seen in this community since the day I started. And it's something that I think at the middle school, that's, it's our job to to cultivate that as as uh students make the transition across the bridge uh into into high school, because if they are having a good time at middle school, it's, it's, it's likely that that will, that will continue across the bridge. So that was just a little snapshot. I appreciate Mrs. Stock and our students uh working to create that. But you will notice a lot of those uh shots were at a recess, and most of those kids did not have jackets on. Um, and it's been freezing cold. So again, I please, I encourage everyone to uh send winter gear with their, with their children. So uh again, there's so many things we could highlight, but but tonight, we, we really want to highlight uh the work that Mr. Massey uh has been doing with our Screen Printing Club. There, there's some, some super cool stuff that our our students are doing. So I, I asked our students to ask some of the students uh from the the Screen Printing Club to answer a few questions to talk a little about screen printing tonight. What is it about? How do you come up with their designs? Um, how does this support our school? How does it uh transition to things uh outside uh beyond uh school? Um, so I'm gonna ask uh Gideon, I may uh and Clementine to come on up. Um, we have some pictures here from the the Screen Printing Club, and I have some samples that I'm going to uh hold up as they speak. They've done a lot of great work. Uh, I think they just got done uh producing shirts for a school musical. Um, so it's pretty cool to see um uh work turning into to action and and the support, support our school. So uh, Gideon, I think you're going first, right over here.
I'm right with you, buddy.
Screen printing is a way of creating custom shirts. It involves ink, a screen, and a screen printing press. First, you have to make a design. Then you make a screen from it. These designs mostly have to be monochrome, but if it has multiple colors, each color uh has a different screen. The parts of the design that are colored in become a thin mesh in the screen. And the screen is attached to a press and flooded with ink. The screen is then lowered on uh onto a shirt that had been fitted, fitted. The screen is then lowered on, onto a shirt that had been fitted, fitted onto the platen. The printer takes a squeegee and pulls it across the screen, applying a generous amount of pressure to force the ink through the screen. Raise the screen back up and voila, your shirt has a cool and unique design. Of course, the ink needs to dry and you should iron and wash the shirt before wearing it, but after that, you can wear as much as you'd like.
So I'm going to speak on two different topics. So first, how do we come up with different designs? So the Screen Printing Club produces many creative designs each year. One way we come up with our designs is by all submitting ideas and then combining the best ones to create a hybrid design. Other times, we all vote on one favorite. Once we have the design, we tweak it until everyone is happy with the finished product. Some of the factors we take into consideration when creating our designs are the size and placement of the design on the shirt and level of detail. Also, we take into consideration the type of event the shirts are for and which students are going to be wearing them. For example, on bowling night, we made shirts with bowling pins and a ball that we thought all grade levels would like. How has the Screen Printing Club collaborated with Home and School Association? Since I was in sixth grade, even before there was a formal Screen Printing Club, the Home and School Association always provided us with the materials to create the designs we wanted. Since we became an official club, they have been even more supportive and even got us a new printing press. In exchange for the shirts, we print for them, the students, and the school store. They provide our supplies and equipment. So it's a win-win.
Screen printing helps students like us together. It allows us to collaborate and work as a team to create new designs and screen printed designs onto the shirts. It teaches us about teamwork, collaboration, communication, and creativity. We work together and combine our ideas and skills to create and put our project into the real world. Screen printing helps us expand our school spirit by printing designs that represent us as a school. When we go out into the world, we can see other people around us wearing the shirts that we printed, which makes the students who printed the shirts proud to know that they were able to contribute to the fact that people in our community are able to express themselves and express our school. Overall, screen printing at our school gives students an opportunity to learn about working together and it helps them better understand the community around them. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. That was, that was excellent. So just some other samples here. This is from Trout in the Classroom. This was for Bowling Night. That was referenced. So they're doing some really, really good work. I think you all have some samples that you're getting tonight. So they're doing a really nice job, trying different things. And I have to give a lot of credit to Mr. Massey and Mr. Hasback, because a lot of the time, a passion of our, from our staff member becomes a passion for, for our kids. And that's, that's really what makes these experiences great. So they're, they're doing some, some really good work. They don't know this, but like, Mr. Massey and I have been talking about trying to expand this into the school store and actually make a true school store at the middle school to actually have some products in there that could be sold then, then in return to, to support the, the program. So again, they just did the musical, right? So that was a, a really big job that they did for all the, for all the kids in the musical. So they're doing some really good work and we're, we're super proud of them. And we, we, we hope to see this grow. And it's really cool with the Home and School Association. They've been, they've been doing work for the, for the home and school, so they could raise money. And in turn, the, the home and school has been supporting with some, some new equipment. So it's been a really nice relationship. So we're really proud of, of these students. So that, that concludes our presentation, concludes their presentation. Do you have any questions for, for them or me?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Matzanka. I'm sure the, the board would, will have some comments. So if I, if I just go down, I'll start with Dr. Dandy and go down and see if anyone has a comment or question for again.
Just looking forward to the merch store opening.
I, I think that we have one of those Trout in the Classroom t-shirts from prior years still in the house and still being worn. So that's really awesome. And you guys did a great, great job presenting as well. Congratulations for that.
I would just thank you all for coming out. And you did a great job. And I will say, from being in the middle school, every time I walk out of there, I'm just blown away by the level of care and concern that the staff and the teachers and faculty and administrators have. So thank you.
I think when I first heard about the Screen Printing Club, I just was enamored. I just thought it was just the greatest idea. And I'd never heard of anything like that before. So kudos to all of you and everybody involved. I was wondering if, you know, if anybody wants to just briefly say how they got interested. Like, are you really interested in art and designing it? Or were you really like, just going because like your friend was going and then you just decided that you actually liked it? I'm just curious.
Well, when I was in sixth grade, I was in Mr. Massey's Connections class. So I was kind of just like already, like with him every single day. So I was able to like kind of learn about the process and it interested me. So I kept doing it.
Well, thank you very much for coming and presenting. You did, all did a great job.
Really cool what you're doing and really great presentation. I know it's not easy to stand up in front of a group and, and do that. And I thought all three of you did extraordinarily well. And Dr. Matt, as a parent of a middle schooler, the co-struggle is real. So.
I, I have two kids of my own, so.
Nice work, guys. It is so cool what you're doing. I just, I appreciate it very much. Just Dr. Matzanka, Mrs. Stock, you guys, you just bring a smile to my face. So I'm so happy you are here this evening because now I feel really good. So yeah, thank you.
I'd just like to say that you guys did a great job. And it's nice to see the work that you're doing and that the teachers that volunteer their, their time to present a club to the, to the students. That, that's above and beyond what your workload is. So thank you for sharing your passion with the students. And Dr. Matzanka, you always make me smile.
Thank you. Can you call my wife and tell her that?
So, Mr. Massey and kids, thank you so much for coming to present to us. That was really interesting. That was great. The quality, I've seen, I saw the shirts you made for the musical. And that, that was, I mean, the quality was, was professional grade. So well done to you guys, really. Thank you so much. And I want to thank the eighth graders for volunteering at the Veterans Multi-Service Center. As a vet, I've been there volunteering as well. I know they, they love it when the kids come out. So thank you for that. And if I could just close by saying, Mrs. Stock and Dr. Matzanka, you two make us proud to be Panthers. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Massey. Thanks for all your time with the students. And Chris and Kim, thanks so much for your leadership, making it all go and, and, and allow them to do these things. This is really appropriate because this month is School Board Recognition Month. And this is why the board does all that it does to make, to make these programs come alive. And Pennsylvania School Boards Association around the state is recognizing school board members this month for the service that they do. And we talked about some service projects earlier tonight. And I think school board members are the epitome of, of service leaders. Because it's not an easy job overseeing a hundred million dollar budget and making decisions for some thirty-seven hundred students every day. And Pennsylvania School Boards Association puts out some, some statistics. There's forty-five hundred school directors that are serving the five hundred Pennsylvania school districts. Each board has nine school board members. They are elected officials. They're elected every two years, either five members or four members, so that there's some continuity among boards. They're all elected to four-year terms. They're all volunteers without pay. So you go through that headache of getting elected, and then you don't get any, any pay for all, all the things and big decisions you have to make. PSBA estimates that directors devote six to ten hours per month on school board business. I know the amount of information we send our board every week. It is more than six to ten hours a month. It's more like six to ten hours a week of information to prepare for meetings, prepare for the reports and information that, that is, that is sent to you. There are key decision makers on issues such as safety, security, budgeting, policy, hiring, and textbooks. And seventeen percent of Pennsylvania school board members have more than ten years' experience as of 2022. So there are a lot of new people getting into the, to the school board realm. And sixty percent of all school districts involve students at their local board meetings. We are one of those sixty percent. So it's amazing that not all school boards have student reports at their meetings, but you should be proud of yourselves for, for involving while you're here to hear, to hear from the students. So to show our appreciation to our school board, PSBA has issued certificates to all of you. You have those in, in front of you tonight. And in addition, each of our schools put together a gift or some swag in there for all of our, all our board members. And they're in the bags on your tables. And you can just hold up one of those, one of those bags. Let me just tell you what, what you'll find in there when you open up the, the goodie bag. The middle school, there are some t-shirts. We just heard about some of the t-shirts. So you have some of those designed by students as part of your, your, your school board bag and school board swag tonight. Wallingford Elementary School has a cares mug, and they are featuring those mugs. Look at them closely because they are featuring authentic student artwork on those mugs. Swathmore Rutledge Elementary School, they have a school board member survival kit in there. So take a good close look at that. The high school has a framed photo of the marching band that was taken by one of our students. So it's a, it's a specialized framed photo. There's a landard and there's a copy of the 2024 high school yearbook in there for you to enjoy from all the memories of at least 2024. Twenty-five is not out yet, but we'll get you one as soon as, as soon as they arrive. And finally, from another Providence Elementary School, there's a framed piece of artwork in there created by a student for each of you. And we hope that you all hang this with pride as, as, as a reminder of you're all making a huge difference for many students in this community and, and the difference in, in the lives of young people. So on behalf of the entire student body, faculty, and community, we thank you for all the service that you provide as a school board. And please enjoy all of the, the gifts and swag that come from the students and the staff in our buildings. Congratulations and thanks for all you did.
Well, thank you, Dr. Scanlon, and thank you to all the, the schools that were involved in that. That was very thoughtful. I really appreciate that. We all appreciate that. Okay, moving on to board announcements. We had a couple, a couple announcements. Last Thursday, the board met in a board retreat with the administrators. Many of them are here tonight. Actually, some of our students are leaving. Go ahead, guys. We'll just watch you, we'll just watch you slip out. Don't worry. All right, back to board announcements. The kids didn't want to stay for board announcements. Imagine why. Last Thursday, the board met in a board retreat. I want to thank Dr. Scanlon for organizing the board meeting retreat with many of the administrators which are sitting over there off camera. I want to thank them for spending their Thursday evening with us after a long day of work. And it was a great retreat. We, we talked about board protocols and we talked about objectives for next year. It was a really good atmosphere. We really got a lot of good stuff completed. And I want to thank Dr. Scanlon for, for setting that all up. We also met an executive session prior to this meeting. And the last board announcement I have is Mrs. Witowski Smith would like to give, provide us with an update on our superintendent search. Please take it away.
Thank you. For our superintendent update, first, I'm going to start by thanking everyone on this board. They have been working very hard during this process. In, in addition to all the usual background checks, resume reviews, board members wrote high-quality interview questions that reflected us as a community. We watched recorded interviews from each of candidates, innumerable school board meetings, and candidate presentations to judge the interactions between candidates and their communities. And the candidates approached problem solving. We looked for candidates who always put children first. We listened to and received our stakeholders' input to understand and impart the importance of community, teachers, staff, and student relations. We understand that communication style is important to our entire community. Districts were evaluated. We looked at not only people, but we also looked at entire districts. We evaluated their performance on student measures of success for their equity practices, their system of student interventions, and mental health practices. Candidates have been required to discuss their views on curriculum, instruction, most effective innovative practices that allow students to achieve to their fullest potential. Candidates have been evaluated on their expertise in negotiations and finalizing contracts. Facilities, plans, and good stewardship of budgets, resources, and human capital were evaluated. Each candidate was required to demonstrate knowledge and understanding of our strategic plan, our community, our strengths, and our challenges. Each of our finalists will be required to present a plan to address one of our five strategic plan pathways. At this time, the board is very happy to say that we have two finalists. We are down to two. Our two finalists are both award-winning, accomplished leaders in their communities. Our responsibility now will be to decide which candidate is the best fit for us. We're on track to select the best candidate for our district by the end of February. By keeping to our intended timeline, we're allowing for a smooth transition between our district and the new superintendent. It takes time for a new superintendent to finalize their contract with us and to alert their current employer. It may take several months before he or she is able to join us. Our intention is to have a candidate join us by spring. If we accomplish this, the new superintendent will be able to learn about our school community when we are fully running. More importantly, he or she will have the opportunity to thoroughly participate in the planning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. When our students return in September, we will be ready. For these reasons, the board has worked tirelessly to maintain an ambitious schedule. We look forward to introducing a new superintendent to our community this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Witowski Smith. And let me thank, I want to thank the entire board for all their work. Everyone's put a lot of time and effort, taken it very seriously. Mary Jo, you've, you've kept us on task and kept us focused. And I thank you for that. I, I really appreciate it. And, and the board as well, put a lot of their own personal time and effort into it. And it's been very impressive. And we, we've made our community proud with the way we've, we've taken this project on. So thank, thank you for that report. Now, moving on to audience recognition in response for items for action on the agenda. This is the time for, on the agenda where we give an opportunity for public comment for items on the agenda. We will have time later for topics not on the agenda. As a reminder, public comment is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board or maybe come before the board. It's a time for us to listen and hear perspectives and experiences from our community. While we can't answer questions during the meeting, we always make sure we have an opportunity for follow-up after the meeting. Because we want to give people, as many peoples possible, an opportunity to speak, we'll continue to follow our three-minute time limit. Once we hit that three-minute time limit, I'll ask you to try to finish up your final sentence. If we have any speakers, when you go up to the podium, please remember to say your full name and the street within our district in which you live. Are there, is there anybody here who would like to speak on items on the agenda this evening? Okay, moving on. All right. I read all of that. I need to practice. Moving on to minutes. Our next item for action on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Mrs. Williams, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Do I have any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call though?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. I just want to remind everyone here and everyone watching at home that our first three standing committees, Educational Affairs, Facilities and Finance, and Policy are all recorded and on the district YouTube page where you can watch at your convenience. Moving on to Wellness Advisory, Dr. Grande, do you have anything for us?
Well, wellness met right before this meeting. So we'll actually report out next.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Pennsylvania School Board Association, Ms. Witowski Smith.
Hey, PSBA, Pennsylvania School Board Association, is offering student leader scholarships. It's a series of scholarships that recognize outstanding student leaders. They've been established to provide one-time award of up to five thousand dollars to graduating seniors from PSBA member districts, which we are one of them. from PSBA member districts, which we are one of them. And so the ongoing leadership, there's criteria for these scholarships and information is forwarded to Dr. Batic and I know that she is making sure that that gets to the right students. Also, that Dr. Linda, Senator Linda Schlegel Culver is our new leading the Senate in Pennsylvania. She's the new education committee chair. And so she is a Republican and expected to pursue, pursue the creation of a targeted school voucher-style lifeline scholarship program. So she is looking to expand vouchers in the state. So her quote is, "My approach to policy issues in Harrisburg has been and always will be about doing good for the people of Pennsylvania that will ring true in my role as Chair of Education Committee in the state." So hopefully we will hear about some more of her initiatives in the future. That's all from PSBA.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Delaware County Community College Liaison and Mr. Miller?
No report this month, but other than to point out that we will be approving their trustee candidates later in the meeting.
Yes, we will. It's on the agenda. Thank you. Delaware County Intermediate Union, that's me, no report for this month. Moving on to finally Delaware County School Board Legislative Council and Mrs. Wattman?
Pardon, just a few things. The House, the House and the Senate convened the twenty-five, twenty-six legislative session on January seventh. Governor Shapiro will present the twenty-five, oh, hold on, twenty-five, twenty-six state budget on February fourth. Pennsylvania Department of, Department of Education budget hearings will take place on February twenty-fourth. Legislators have begun introducing cosponsorship memoranda for legislation intended to be introduced in the twenty-five, twenty-six legislative session. So a couple of key updates from the most recent Legislative Council meeting to address teacher shortages. Bills to incentivize inactive educators to return to teaching have been introduced as well as a bill to extend Act forty-eight deadlines for continuing education for teachers returning to service. Speaking of charter schools, there are some bills moving forward, moving and being introduced for enrollment caps for regional charter schools. And once again, state audits for cyber charter schools. Intermediate units legislation to allow IUs to own and use facilities for instruction were also introduced. That was a very interesting one that I look forward to learning a little bit more about. And finally, House Regul, I can't talk tonight. House Resolution sixty-eight, twenty-nine, the Hartz Act of twenty twenty-four is now law. It establishes grants to help schools obtain AEDs, train staff in CPR and develop cardiac emergency response plans. We also received a charter update from Mr. Larry Feinberg from PSBA. Public schools continue to work to impact the current state of affairs with charter schools. You know, from a public school perspective, it takes taxpayer dollars out of the public education system and moves them into private schools at a cost that's significantly more than it is to educate a student in a, in a public school. And it, our constituents pay for that through charter school tuition. Our, our district has to pay for that tuition for someone to attend, not one of our schools. And pay again significantly more. So while our new Chair for the Senate Education Committee is proposing to support that, I strongly, strongly object and would encourage others to learn more if they're interested. The, I'm sorry, the, the so that's the charter schools, yeah, just charter schools in general. Public, public dollars are used and funneled and followed that student, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wattman. All right. Now moving on to personnel. We have thirteen items for action in personnel. Are there any items on this list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none, I'll just go down real quick. We have resignations and retirements as listed. We have appointments as listed, leaves of absence, changes of position, changes of salary status, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five conference requests, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five mentors appointments, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five activities supplementals, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter athletic supplementals, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five activities advisors appointments, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fall athletic supplementals, accompanist at Swathmore Rutledge School, Chester County IU. All items in this section are attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items A through N?
So moved.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Grandy, thank you. Do I have any discussion? I'll just Mrs. Williams, please.
I just want to wish everyone who has announced their retirement best wishes on behalf of the district, particularly Pat Craven, who's a third grade teacher at SRS. He is like the Mr. Rogers of public education. He really is. There is no, no one better suited to be an elementary teacher, so best wishes to him.
Thank you and thank you for saying so. Going down the table. Mrs. Wattman, please.
I also, I wanted to wish Dr. Moskowsky well in her new role and thank her for her time and service to the district as well.
Thank you. And yeah, the entire board wishes Dr. Moskowsky well. Sorry to see you leave. But best of luck. All right. Got a motion, so we are done our discussion. Ms. Mosley, will you please take a roll call vote? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Whitsett. I didn't see you needed, wanted to speak.
I just want to personally acknowledge Aswina for the work that she did for the district. She's sort of like an unsung hero. She has dedicated her time and her expertise into the innovation and of the, of the elementary school and palliative programs for curriculum and, and just being there as an advocate for students. And you've done a wonderful job and you will be surely missed. And good luck. Break a leg on your new venture.
Okay, any further discussion on personnel? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to policy. We have two items for action and policy. Are there any policies on this list? Anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none, we have policies for second reading as listed and policies for repeal as listed. All the items in the section are attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the two items under policy?
So moved.
Mrs. Wattman, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Holbert, thank you. Discussion on policy, items of policy. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to curriculum, we have one item for action in curriculum. Well, we don't need to remove it since there's only one. We have contract for the Center for Transformative Teaching and Learning. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mrs. Witowski Smith, thank you. Do I have a second? I saw her, Mrs. Williams next to me first. Thank you. Any discussion on this, the one item under curriculum? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Great, thank you. Moving on to student services, we have four items for approval in student services. Does, is there any items on the list on our student services anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none, we have educational service agreements as listed. Contract with Everyday Speech as listed, Cric Software Inc. and Nyman Associates. All the items in this section are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the items in student services?
So moved.
Mrs. Witowski Smith, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Holbert, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Holbert, thank you. Discussion under any of the items in student services? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please hold a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, we have thirteen items for approval in finance. Are there any items on this list anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none, we have bills paid to vendors from December first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have financial statements from December first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have the treasures report from December first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Approval of budget transfers from December first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have a general fund balance commitment. Resetting fund balance commitment levels. Fiscal year twenty-six Ready to Learn Tax Equity Supplemental Resolution. A Power School Upgrade. Trinity Cooperative Daycare Nursery for MPE. Trinity Cooperative Day Nursery for SRS. Power School Messenger. Inta, in, in, integral, what? Integral one. Integral one, thank you. I think, is that right? All right, we're going to go, I think integral one sounds good. Yeah, thank you. CM Building Solutions, and that is all of them. Do I have a motion to approve the items under finance?
So moved.
Dr. Grandy, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Do I have any discussion under the items under finance? Dr. Grandy?
I'll just make a quick comment. There's an item on here related to HVAC preventive maintenance. And I just want to point out this as part of a commitment made by the part of this board to really begin to make investments in our buildings around preventive maintenance to try to prevent future costs down the road. And so this is a really important step in that direction. We did earmark money in the budget for this fiscal year for the first time to really invest in preventive maintenance in the district. So happy to see that. I will also point out item G, the Ready to Learn Tax Equity Supplement Resolution. This is a direct result of some changes made to school funding in this current state budget year. So there were some investments made in districts like ourselves that face significant property tax burdens. And so this is a direct result of, of some of those efforts and state education funding. While we had hoped to get more, as we always do, it is nice to get something. And this is a little unique in that this is money that's in the current state fiscal year. But the way it's designed is to actually apply to the next school fiscal year. And so you'll see this resolution in here are funds that will help offset some tax pressures for residents in the upcoming budget. Just wanted to share that background.
Yes, thank you for, for pointing all of those out. And if anybody wants additional information, I encourage them to watch the last Finance and Facilities Committee meeting where a lot of the preventive maintenance was discussed. And thanks to, to Mr. Malonia as well as staying on top of that, helping us out with that. And of course, Ms. Mosley for all her help as well. So thank you for that. Dr. Grandy, thank you. Additional discussion on items under finance? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski, Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Under other, we do have three items under other, two of which need to be voted on, one is, is, which is procedural. The first one is Delaware County Community College trustee appointments. And the second one is the district's voting delegates at the PSBA Legislative Delegate Assembly Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these two items? The third one on there, by the way, is, is Delaware County Intermediate DCIU out of district representatives is strictly, they're listed there, but is, is strictly procedural, so we don't have to vote on that. Do I have a motion to approve those first two items?
So moved.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Grandy, thank you. Discussion on any of the items under other? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to audience recognition for response for items not on the agenda. I will not read all the stuff that I read before. I'll just remind everybody, we stick to a three-minute time limit. When you go up to the podium, please state your name and the street on, in, within the district in which you live. Is there anyone who would like to comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Please.
Hi. My name is Basha Silverman. I live on Marietta Avenue. And I'm here tonight to represent Haven Hold the Phone. Before I tell you what I think about that, I just wanted to acknowledge all of your hard work, all of these items on the agenda, all the agendas that you do. We're so grateful for all the work that you do as a school board, as Dr. Scanlon mentioned. Congratulations on school board recognition, school board member recognition month. You definitely deserve it. And we are grateful that you have heard from us so many times. And we just wanted to come here tonight to let you know that we're still meeting. We are still a significantly sized group of parents and community members. And we still care very, very much about this issue. Since we've last come before you, a lot of things have changed, certainly politically. But as it relates to our kids and their phones, it has only become more and more clear how scary it, life is when they are connected, overly connected. Since we've been here, the New Jersey governor has put forward a ban on cell phones. The country of Australia has banned social media at the age, until the age of sixteen. The news and the research, less the news, but more the research, is growing to communicate just how important this is for us to think about. And we beg you, the school board, to take this as seriously as every other issue that you have to consider and make decisions about. We know also since we've been here before you that our interim superintendent has taken this very seriously. He has galvanized our community, put on forums, done surveys, done focus groups. And we are incredibly grateful for that work. And we hope that you take the findings that we believe he will be presenting to you in the coming weeks very seriously. And with that, I, I just wanted you to know Haven Hold the Phone is not going away. And we really hope that you consider our requests. Thank you.
I'm just continuing. I'm Emily Spangler. I live in, on Dickinson Avenue. I am, I just wanted to further emphasize just what we are hoping for. I think Basha clear-
further emphasize just what we are hoping for. I think Basha explained very well what why this is important. And I I think throughout this process, I've learned a lot more to a lot of the administrative barriers to a full ban on cell phones or devices. I've learned more about, you know, that there's pockets of opposition. But I will, I I feel even more strongly if we, if this is the right thing, if the research tells us this is the right thing for our children, we can figure out how to do it. Our children deserve that. I know you guys agree with that. So just to reiterate, our hope is that any policy revision includes consistent enforcement across the board, not dependent on the teacher, a full off and away, all day ban on personal electronic devices. Because we don't, I don't, as a pediatrician, I don't see there a distinction between instructional time in the classroom and outside the classroom. It's all instructional time. It's all critical stuff that they're learning, skills that they'll use throughout their lifetime. And those time in between the classrooms, the time in the in the lunchroom. We hope policies will include exemptions, of course, for five oh four plans and mechanisms and well advertised mechanisms that I think are already in existence for alternative methods of of communicating with children during the day. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for items not on the agenda? No? Okay. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Sir?
Just want to, thank you, ladies. We've been in touch and thank you so much. We are, we will present that information at the February twelfth meeting. Survey closed on Friday, so there are some two thousand responses I'm sitting through on that, so we're in good shape. We do, I do want to make an announcement to just to the board, and I did brief the board earlier that we have had a bus driver shortage today. We think we've got things covered for tomorrow, but we have thirty five bus drivers. We had twelve that are sadly ill and and sick with the flu. So we are trying to cover that. We do have dispatchers driving, and we are trying to scramble. We did send information out to our parents. If we have to make some alter, you know, alternative bus arrangements or cancel a bus, we want to get that out as early as possible in the morning so so parents can make arrangements and make sure that we have people in the buildings early enough in case parents have to drop off prior to going going to work. So we are trying to do what we can. We do have some drivers hired, but there was a twelve week process for them to go finish their CDL hours before they can they can drive. So we are addressing that, just so, just so everybody knows.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon, appreciate that. And just before we adjourn, I just want to say one thing. Go Birds. This meeting is adjourned.